Okay, so good evening. I will call this meeting to order. It's September 30th. I'm Kristi Boudreau, Chair of the Hatfield School Committee, and we're delighted to be here with so many of you this evening and many folks online as well. As we kick off, I just want to acknowledge that when we record meetings via Zoom and we're all sitting in the room together, it can be a challenge technically. And if there's anyone who's sitting online, who's having a hard time hearing us, if you'll let us know through the chat. But we're asking for those that are online that you not chat amongst yourselves on the Zoom chat because that is outside of public meeting rules. So we're going to keep it open in case we hit a technical issue and that way you can tell us. But otherwise, the remote participants will abide by the same rules that are in-person participants will. So as I call us to order, the first thing on our agenda is public comment. And I just want to review, given that we are likely to have public comment, which we love, that anyone is welcome to come and speak at our meetings. We do require that it, whatever you have to share with us falls within the responsibility of the school committee and is also pertinent to what is on the agenda this evening. We typically look for comments to be no more than three minutes in length. And public comment lasts about 20 minutes. However, if there's burning interest, we'll accommodate that. But we also make sure that everybody has a chance to speak. So if you've already spoken once, we would ask that you wait till others are finished. So with that, I'm going to actually open up to those who are with us remotely. If there's anyone who would like to make a public comment, can you put your name in the chat? That's a good sign. It means you got that up and running. Thank you. Okay. And so we're going to have you mute. Excellent. Okay, so if anyone that is with us would like to make a public comment. Mr. Wall has graciously put some technology together so that you can do that and the people who are with us on Zoom can see you as well. Is there anyone who's with us that would like to make a public comment? Ms. Charette? Yeah. So can you please? I'm going to mute my audio and if you would make sure that you were unmuted and your video was running.
Hi, my name is Jenny Charette. I don't know where to look, but I've spoken to you on this topic many times as the sixth grade teacher and as somebody who fully supports this move of sixth grade to the, to Smith Academy. But I thought tonight, maybe it would make more sense to talk about a parent, as a parent. I have two students in Hatfield Schools. I have a fourth grader and a seventh grader. So my fourth grader would be experiencing this potentially in the next couple of years. And my seventh grader just experienced the transition from the elementary school to Smith Academy. And I asked him today. I said, well, you know, I'm going to talk about this again. I know you know that we were talking about this in the past. And what are your feelings? If you had to go to Smith Academy last year compared to this year and now you've experienced, what would you have thought about it? And his gut reaction was initially, I don't think I would have been ready. That was his first response to me. And I said, well, why do you think that? What didn't, what wouldn't have made you ready? And he said, I know that you and Ms. Bailey really got me ready last year for this. And I wanted to share that with you because I know that the plan that Dr. Driscoll and Ms. Pichard are going to talk to you about today really talks about what we've done to the school year this year to make this transition in answer to some of the questions that we had last year about this. They've really made a plan and we've changed the way that things are happening in fourth and fifth grade this year and sixth grade to make sure that this transition for our potential future transition has set them up to be successful as sixth graders going into this. My son definitely had this, you know, the bumps in the road on the way into Smith Academy. I think like any student's going to have, going to a new school, learning new systems. But he feels so comfortable here already as the youngest student. And I've asked him some of those other questions about how he felt being with older students was. And he said, I really don't see them. He said, the only time of day that he typically sees them is during advisory, which is 10 or 15 minutes out of the day where they might be in the cafeteria getting a snack at the same time. He talked about that he does see them playing soccer. He's on the soccer team and he's really gotten to know. He was really excited that his learning buddy from elementary school, when he was in first grade, his Jack was his learning buddy and they're on the same soccer team and they're practicing together. And so he's starting to build those relationships with juniors and seniors who are there and mentoring him now. And he really, really has made an easy transition. And he is a student that I wouldn't have, I feel weird telling the public about my own child, but he wasn't the most mature in sixth grade. He wasn't the most advanced learner in sixth grade. And I do think that I've prepared him well and I've done a lot as his mother, but he isn't who I think people would have initially thought would have been maybe the most successful in that transition for some different reasons. And he's having an amazing beginning of the year here. I know that he is a year older than the students that we're potentially talking about. But I think what he leaned on as the thing that made it the easiest transition is that we prepared them at the elementary school. And I know that that's what we're working on doing for this current fifth grade class and what we'll do for future fourth and fifth grade classes as we've made some changes to the way that things are happening at the elementary school. So I just wanted to share that story with you all. Like I said, I know I've shared my, my teacher side a lot, but that's my, my parents' side. And I know that I would have no reservation sending my current fourth grade up there and just a year after this transition, if that was the case. So just thought I'd share that with all. Thank you for letting me speak and thank you for including me in the conversations about this throughout the last year.
I'm Emily Case. I'm a middle school science teacher and team leader. And I just wanted to reiterate that middle school team's support for bringing the sixth grade up. I've been teaching here since 1997. And I have to say, they always feel ready and some of them feel over-ready when they come academically and socially and emotionally. And we have a lot in place to support them as they come. I'm also one of the mentoring coordinators for the district. And I can tell you that the best predictors of strong collaborative professional relationships are proximity and schedule. And a lot of the standards run six through eight. And six through eight is a time when all the standards kind of step up a notch. So the ability to collaborate and spiral our curriculum in grades six through eight, I think, would benefit a lot and benefit the kids a lot just by the proximity and having the same school schedule. Thank you.
Okay, Heather Dostal. I just have, I maybe have a couple of questions and I don't know if someone can answer this. I'm just sort of stepping into this a little bit and.
Let me just tell you this at the start. By all means, ask you questions.
Okay.
Public comment being the way that it is.
I got you.
You don't actually respond to it.
That's fine.
However, your questions could help give us ideas for questions that we can ask when we get to a discussion this evening.
Okay.
So raising them now, you may not give an immediate answer, but you may find that you get an answer later.
Okay. So I am involved with a lot of the students at Smith Academy. Their lives cross my path because I'm their riding instructor. I asked them how they feel about sixth grades moving up. And I'm not sure if this is a question that any of you have actually asked the students that are here already. And I've asked all different types of kids that, you know, that have all, they're, they're very strong in their opinions. As kids are, these kids are really strong in that they don't feel that they would have wanted to move up here in sixth grade. And they feel scared for my daughter, who is in fourth grade now, like for her to make that transition. They just, their general is that they don't feel like they're ready emotionally. And I, I don't know the answer to that. And I understand some of the things that you've already said. I don't know what my daughter's going to be like in a couple of years. I know that there was huge growth this year, but like you just, you don't know. And I have great concern as a parent, as I know a lot of other parents do, and how you're going to truly segregate them. It's nice to hear that you're saying that, you know, the seventh graders are saying they don't run into them except for occasionally to get a snack. But, you know, a sixth grade child and a 12th grader, that's a massive age gap. And it's really, for a parent, that's a huge concern. So I hope that that has been taken into account and that there will be truly some steps in place. And that we, I guess, my, my biggest fear as a community member is if this goes into place. I know I'm one of the few parents that is here tonight. But, and I know there's people online, but we can't afford to lose any more kids. And I just, my concern is that there are people in the sidelines that are just waiting to see how this plays out. Then they're going to rip their kids out of here. And we've already had that. We've watched that happen in all, both schools. And I, as a community member that grew up here and went to school here, and I don't want that to happen. I want everyone to have their jobs. I want the community to stay and be as wonderful as it was when I was a child for our children. But I want there also to be some sort of social network. I think it's just getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And kids don't have any social life. Like when there's nine kids in a class and you might be that one kid that doesn't get much, you just, you, they need more. And as a parent, you strive to get them more. But if we make really big decisions that make big changes and people aren't speaking up, where does that leave us, I guess, is my question. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make comments?
Hi, my name is Kevin Wall. I'm a middle school social studies teacher here at Smith Academy. But like Jenny, I'm also here as a parent. I have a student who's in ninth grade this year and he's gone through Hatfield Public Schools since kindergarten. And I fully support this transition. I think he would have flourished having been here in sixth grade. I think the connections that they can make through middle school is tremendous. And by the time they're in sixth grade, I think they're ready. My son entered Smith Academy as the youngest kid in the building when he came in in seventh grade. And I think if he had come in in sixth grade, he would have been able to make connections with students who are now in 10th grade or 11th grade. And I think that would have been a tremendous benefit for him. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I just got to do a quick off.
Share your name.
That's it. Hi, my name's Catherine Johnson. I have two kids in the elementary, three kids in the elementary school, one is a preschooler and two first graders. My question is, aside from your plan for today, talking about potentially moving sixth grade up into the high school, what, have you started a conversation about other measures in order to prevent this school from closing by the time my kids get to that school? And to prevent nine kids per class to be the norm, that sort of thing?
That's a little, a little bit beyond our topic for this evening.
Sure.
But it is definitely something that the committee speaks about. And just to disabuse the notion that nine is the norm, it is not.
Right. Sure.
Just so you know.
Okay, okay.
But thank you.
You get the idea. Okay, thank you.
And I, your sentiment is taken. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Mr. Wall, would you mind muting that?
Okay. One last chance for those who are joining remotely. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? Okay. So with that, that's, thank you all for joining and for sharing. Did we see someone that had a public comment that they didn't get a chance? Okay, so solved the mystery. With that, we're going to go on to mission moments. And for those that aren't in our meetings all the time, mission moments are a way for us to kick off meetings and give some reflection to, to ways that we are meeting the mission that we have called out for Hatfield Public Schools. And so stories and testimonials and ways that our district improvement plan is actually coming to life. So if there's anyone from administration or the committee that would like to share a mission moment, Dr. Driscoll?
Thank you. I'll share, I'm going to share a mission moment that actually has nothing to do with our topics tonight whatsoever. But it's timely. It just, it just happened and I think it's important to share. So this week, I was fortunate enough to be able to go into our Spanish class. Ms. Baranowski has done a tremendous job with, with that program. And this year, she's partnered her classes with a school in Columbia that is specifically an English dual language school in Columbia. And so she set up kind of a pen pal and video chatting relationship with this school all the way down in Columbia. They have to come into school early or stay late to make sure the times overlap. And I was able to see this in action the other day. I went in and watched our students in Hatfield engaging across continents with a school. And it was, it was incredible to see that connection. The students were, they were into it. They were conversing in Spanish. The way it works is the, they kind of split it up half and half so that the Colombian school gets a chance to practice their English and then they switch and then converse in Spanish. And, and so it was really nice to hear those students just interact in a really organic, just very, very neat way, just talking about stuff with each other across continents. It was pretty, it was a pretty great thing to see. So kudos to her and to our students for, for being brave to do that.
Any other mission moments? I think we heard some last week, so we met. With that, thank you. I had the chance to see part of that conversation in the hallway as I came in the other day. And it was fun to see because it was like the recap of like, what did you find out? So that was neat. The, is there anyone who has an interest in pulling anything off the consent agenda? Okay, so the minutes from last meeting on the 16th are approved. And with that, we'll get to the highlight of the night, which is our presentation about sixth grade potentially moving to Smith Academy for the 25, 26 school year. And so I will turn this over to Dr. Driscoll. Will you also be presenting, sharing your?
I will. I'm going to share my screen and it should both present up here and it should share on Zoom. So let me share my screen. I should be unmuted. Okay. Checking, good. Now, if I can minimize this, it won't cut anything. Correct? All right, so as you've heard already tonight, we'll be speaking and talking about the potential of moving the sixth grade, which is currently at Hatfield Elementary School, up to Smith Academy to the middle high school. So just as an introduction and kind of review of where we left off. So last year, at the request of, of teaching staff and with the support of administration at both Hatfield Elementary and Smith Academy, we collectively kind of explored the possibility of moving the sixth grade to Smith Academy. So this started with kind of getting teacher input and finding broad support there. It expanded to conversations with administration. And we expanded that conversation to fifth grade families as well. So we reached out and touched base with those. Across all, all of those groups, we found pretty broad support for the shift in, in moving sixth grade to Smith Academy. We then moved the conversation forward with the committee. However, because of the timing, that was a conversation that was happening. It really started in February and March toward the end of the school year. It was decided to table the issue until this fall with the understanding that we would pick it off now with the potential for the change to occur at the beginning of next year, giving us the whole year to help support a transition among current fifth grade students. And, and this may be some review from last year, but it's also important, I think, to share again about kind of the rationale for where this conversation, why it started. I mean, we, sixth grade has always been at the elementary school. So why did the conversation begin at, about moving sixth grade up? And it should be acknowledged that the conversation has happened a few different times, but last year was the, the most traction it had received across groups. So we often hear in terms of student readiness that the sixth grade students just seem ready for the middle school experience. This can be seen at kind of all school meetings where they may be a little more disengaged at the elementary school as, you know, opposed to when we bring them up for pep rallies here. And they are really into it. They're really engaged and into it as socially in that, in that way. They could benefit from a larger variety of elective opportunities. So our schedule allows for Xbox, which are kind of club exploratory options for students for an embedded Genius Hour that occurs with those, which again gives students a chance to kind of look at and research and develop passion projects of their own. And it also provides for daily specials and electives. So things like band, art, PE, or health that may happen on a more frequent basis than they do at the elementary school, which, which can be good for students to have those kind of outlets throughout, throughout the day on a regular basis. It allows students the opportunity to engage socially with middle school peers. I think we heard from Mr. Wall about how he felt his son could have benefited from maybe knowing some students who were in seventh, eighth grade when he was in sixth grade. And we, we see that a lot with students who come, come to us and they, you know, they, they expand their, they expand their social circle to include other middle schoolers. And they're able to find connections and build relationships with students who might not be in their core class or, or core grade level. And that really has a lot of benefits for them. You know, when, when we talk about having students who might not, you know, they might not be in your, you know, your, your, they might not be into sports or they might not be into something else. And this allows them to have a bigger group to connect with. And it really, it can be nice to see students make those connections. And we see it on a regular basis that, that occurs. It would also allow our, our, our sports program to expand. So it would allow students the ability to play on middle school teams with the opportunity to quote unquote, play up in select JV games where it's appropriate. And I've spoken at length with Mr. Duncan, our athletic director, about this. And it feels like an important time to say that we would not have sixth graders playing on varsity sports, wouldn't have sixth graders playing against, you know, seniors, juniors in high school. We have, there are some JV teams that we know in our league that are mostly comprised comprised of middle school students. They might have a couple ninth graders and it might be appropriate for a student to play in that. But it certainly wouldn't be appropriate for middle, for a sixth grade student to play on a varsity team. And that wouldn't be something that we did. It would also allow access to Smith Academy social, emotional learning opportunities. So things like advisory, team building, team building opportunities that exist within our, within our day to support staff specifically trained to help handle kind of older, older kid challenges that, that may occur. And also peer mentors. We hear a lot of concern about what if my sixth grader interacts with a high schooler? And we will see in a little bit, we'll see some of the guardrails that we have in place for that. But what we, what I think it's important to highlight too is that we have some phenomenal peer mentors in our school and, and older students who are just incredible role models for, for any student. And so this would allow them to shine in that leadership role and to help work with our, with some younger students who could really benefit from having kind of a, you know, a big brother, a big sister who might not be their actual big brother or big sister. So it would allow us to develop that, that program as well. In terms of academic readiness, we've heard from teachers that curriculum design really does favor middle school models. The, the grade bands that Desi has, has published tend to go elementary school through fifth grade and then middle school, sixth through eighth grade. Having a full middle school, sixth through eighth grade in the same building in close proximity to each other means that even if it's not scheduled, and the schedule would support this, but even if it wasn't specifically scheduled, that proximity allows teachers to focus more on students across subject areas, across the board. It just happens. In addition, the schedule supports it too, where the middle school team meets very regularly. And they meet to discuss students, to discuss what works with students, frequent challenges that might be occurring across grade level, across grade levels and across subject areas. And it allows them to develop a really specific college approach for every, every student that comes through so that they're all working with that student in the same way. It also allows that student to have more variety in their school day. So it's not that one person doing, you know, having that same approach and only that one person. It allows for a collective approach to, to helping students that can really benefit them across, across the curriculum. And it should be noted that our middle school team, our seventh and eighth grade team here has, has a track record. They have a fantastic track record and it's, it's, and it's earned. They have done really fantastic work with our, with our middle school students across a number of years. And this would allow that, that model to expand, to include our current sixth grade team, which is also fantastic and wonderful to be kind of included in that. And it would, it would allow them to be included in planning, in developing cross-curricular activities, in just kind of a wraparound approach to supporting our students in the middle school. The information this side comes from the Association for Middle Level Education. So that's a full disclosure. And this kind of, it dives into what, what a middle school team kind of can, can do to help support students and, and what having that team set up can allow a school to do to help improve across, across all areas. So firstly, it allows teams to respond to needs and data. So by having a middle school team structure where they have regular team meetings about students, where they review data, both academic data, social, emotional data, behavioral data, it allows them to work together to align their goals and their curriculum for a more structured experience. It allows them to say, here's what we're going to do. Let's make this plan together and let's hold each other accountable to making sure that it happens. And this would allow that to exist from sixth grade to eighth grade. It allows teams to integrate curriculum and skills. So our, our middle school team has historically done a really fantastic job of integrating curriculum across disciplines. So developing projects that might include math, science, social studies, English, in, in, in having, having pieces of those brought in to, to a student project that may expand what they're, what they're able, how they're able to use those skills. I know that the sixth grade team has done this in the past too. And this would allow them to kind of create that cohesion in a, in a middle school team that I think would, would benefit students academically. It allows them to share what's going well. Having been a middle school teacher, I can tell you that it can't be overstated how important it is for our teachers to come together and say, hey, what are you, what are you doing that's working really well with this group? Because I'm struggling. And to put their heads together and, and to really say, hey, this is, this is working for me. And it allows that, that sharing to benefit students. And it allows them to maximize time that they have with students creatively. So the autonomy that we have within the middle school to utilize the schedule to best benefit students could be expanded into. So the autonomy that we have within the middle school to utilize the schedule to best benefit students could be expanded into include sixth grade. So it might be that grade levels or classes are working on projects together. So rather than spending, you know, for if they're working on a project, rather than spending just their 15 minutes in English, they might have a longer block that combines English and social studies where the group works together and really dives into into learning. It could, it could mean that that those opportunities exist vertically. So we have students working at multiple, multiple grade levels on similar kind of things. So they have the autonomy to do that. We've talked about these a little bit already, but there are other benefits for students as well. So by having a true middle school experience, it would allow them to access things like health curriculum, X blocks, and the other opportunities that we've talked about, more elective opportunities. A middle school band that could go from sixth to eighth grade would allow those opportunities to be expanded further in the elementary school too. So we could get students started on instruments earlier. It could, it would allow us to expand and create middle school sports. Even where some sports don't exist at the middle school level now, we could possibly do that by having more more sixth graders, more students involved in it. And it would allow us to to continue to embrace our sixth grade in our social opportunities here. Pep rallies, homecoming clubs, things that makes Smith Academy so wonderful. It would allow us to expand that as well. In addition, we have daily support with teachers after school. So students come regularly after school to get support if they're struggling. So we could have that happen every single day for students. At this point, I'm going to take a sip of water and turn it over to Ms. Petrot to talk about how we are preparing our current fifth grade students this year at the elementary school.
So when I first started almost three years ago, sixth grade was the only grade that departmentalized, which meant that they were the class, the grade that two teachers would have taught just two subjects, and then they switched the classes. All other classroom teachers teach all subjects all the time. So what we decided to do is to ensure that in order to scaffold and get students ready, this past year, fifth grade or fourth grade, let me stop for a second. Last year, fifth grade departmentalized for science and social studies only. And so again, students would have an experience on moving from one class to the other for just a small block of time. And the sixth grade continued to be departmentalized. This year, fourth grade is departmentalized for just science and social studies. Fifth grade is now departmentalized. One teacher is doing math and science. The other teacher is teaching ELA and social studies, and those students are switching. And this year, our sixth grade teachers are actually following a middle school model. Again, basically kind of following the same schedule. So these are the different ways that we are ensuring that students feel comfortable and are ready to make that transition over here to Smith Academy. The other piece that's also different, and I know that might be mentioned a little bit later on, is, you know, one of the things that was mentioned last year was this Duke study and about how behaviors increase in a middle school. But you also have to understand that at the elementary school, we historically have not given detentions. It's not been part of our repertoire when students have misbehaved. That has also changed. In order to get kids ready for middle school, the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade teachers have all collectively created and sent home a letter to families stating that there are basically three strikes and you're out, so to speak. There's ways of students getting reminders about their behavior with the fourth time, if a student is still continuing to be not following a classroom rule or expectation, would be staying after for detention. So we again are trying to get students ready for this understanding of their behavior does have consequences and a detention could inevitably happen. And it's the six teachers that collectively take a turn to ensure that there is someone to stay after with them. So these are some of the steps that we are trying to ensure the kids are ready for this stuff.
We'll talk about the budget in just a second, but but because Ms. Petrot mentioned, I did just want to spend a little bit of time discussing the Duke study. So one of the things in researching last year that we discovered was that the the most cited study was out of Duke University, and it was a meta analysis of data among middle schools. And it found two big, there are two two major points that the study made. And the first was that there tended to be an increase in office referrals and behavior in sixth grade, if it was in the elementary school. And the second was that there there tended to be a dip in academic academics as measured by standardized tests in the sixth grade, if it was in the middle school. And so that that information is there. I think it's important to note that there's a couple other other pieces to to think about that. The first is that is how data is collected. Middle schools operating on a team basis, when when they have common issues or things that are going on with students, it's more common for them to refer a student to the office to to support that and so that the office knows what's going on with the student. That that doesn't always happen at an elementary school and the mechanisms for create for collecting that data don't always exist. And that's not not a limitation of our district. That's that's a limitation of schools in general. So there's a big chance that the that that data is informed simply by better data collection at the middle school level when it comes to behavior infractions. The other piece academically found that there was a slight dip in sixth grade scores. In this case, it would be MCAS or whatever standardized tests were used during sixth grade when when the move was made to middle school. What the study mentioned but didn't really focus on was that that same dip occurs in seventh grade for schools that are not, that don't move to a middle school in sixth grade. That same dip occurs because there is a transition. I mean, that's part of a transition, supporting students through that through that transition. And it did find that by the time that are in ninth grade, that those those have evened out. So so the other piece that I think is really important to note about that study is that it was a big meta analysis. What it didn't focus on was middle schools doing it well. What middle schools have been very successful, how they've been successful, why they've been successful, and what pieces can be replicated, you know, across middle schools. And that's, we'll see in a bit, that's that's some information that we have collected. And then we've seen in our middle school team what can make what can make middle school successful. Our next, the next piece here, the budgetary implications, I don't want to focus too much on this. But I think it does, it is important to acknowledge that this shift should be budget neutral. We currently have a sixth grade team at the elementary school. We moved that team to the elementary, to the middle school. So the shift should be budget neutral. There are sometimes unexpected needs that arise, and this is not specific to this potential shift. This is just in general. That there there are associated costs. So I I think that the model by having middle sixth grade in the middle school up here would make it more likely that internal supports found within our our current personnel here could be utilized to help address some of those unanticipated needs should they arise in the sixth grade. So here's a draft schedule of what it could look like for sixth grade, for a sixth grader who are coming, was is coming to the middle school. And I want to, I want to dive into what this sixth grade academy is in a little bit. Students would start out in home nest. That's what may in some other places be called homeroom, but where the Falcons. And then they would have two academic classes in a row. So they would have history or science potentially with Ms. Schret and then Ms. Bailey. Following those two academic blocks, and there is a transition between those academic blocks where students get a break, they get to stand up, move around, go to the bathroom, come back to class and get ready for their next class. They would have advisory. So this is a short block, and this is a block specifically designated for community building or team building for skill setting or start, sorry, goal setting. So that students can take a look at where they are academically, socially, and say, here's where I want to be, and here are the steps I'm going to take to get there. It's also a time when sometimes we have breaks that are taken so that our middle school can have a have a little bit of time outside to run around and to play. Sometimes this includes games between advisories where Mr. Wall's advisory might take Ms. Case's advisory on in a rock, paper, scissors. I don't know. Game, I, I don't know, championship. Following advisory and that break, oh, and I should also mention that this is a time where students can have a snack, a free snack or free breakfast as if I go on, you know, getting one from the from the cafeteria. There we, there are, there's another class, and this should switch this year. We used to have two more academic blocks, but we we made that switch this year for middle school. So following that break, there's another academic block. So this again would be either with Ms. Bailey or Ms. Schret. Following that is a lunch and recess time. So students have time to eat and then we are are working to make sure this is more common in in daily that students, when they're done eating, can go outside for a little break outside. Following that, they have their last academic, their core academic block. They're all academic. And again, this would would be either with Ms. Schret or Ms. Bailey. Following those kind of four academic blocks, core academic blocks is the time where we have we have our elective. So those includes things include things like art and computer science skills class, which we'll, we can talk about in a little bit, PE and health. So those are things that all students have access to and that all students are are able to get on a on a regular rotation here. So we have heard from a number of folks about concerns for students interacting with with older students, so sixth graders and 12th graders in the same same building. So here are some guardrails that we would put in place and make sure that we are, we're making sure that they're they're that interaction isn't isn't done in a way that is either unsupervised or unstructured, if it exists at all. So the location is physically separated. So we'll be, we we remind students of this constantly during advisory. We have signs that we have purchased and are going to be putting up in the halls anyway. And this would allow, you know, more, just more visibility of what the separation is between the high school and middle school. We also have, we're able to monitor the halls. We're able to monitor those during passing time where teachers come out into the hall to make sure that students aren't going where they shouldn't be. We're also able to monitor those outside of passing time through cameras. So we're able to see if if we have someone who's wandered down the hall that they shouldn't go, we can get out there to remind them. We have separate middle school and high school bathrooms. So our high school has used the bathroom front. Our middle school uses the bathrooms in the back of the building. That even includes when they are in separate parts of the building. So when they travel, it takes one minute and eight seconds to walk the long way, if you go the long way at a reasonable pace from the furthest place over there down in Dr. Boyle's room to the middle school bathroom. So and again, we we are able to monitor that. We have hall passes that are required when out of classrooms, and this is for every student, not just middle school, but high school as well. So if we have students who are leaving class, we know where they are and where they're going. We talked a little bit about sports, but sixth grade participation in sports would be limited to middle school teams. And those middle school teams may play select JV games with teams that are primarily composed of middle schoolers. We're in a position in most other districts in our area are in a position where we often have eighth graders and occasionally seventh graders, but more often eighth graders who do play up, who who get spots on either JV or varsity squads because their skill level is is appropriate. But our our sixth grade students, it would allow us to focus on developing our our middle school program here too. One place that there is potential for students to interact with each other, younger students and older students, is X blocks and clubs. Those are always supervised. They're in designated areas. And and that's a place, quite frankly, that would be a a prime spot to develop some of those mentoring mentoring relationships between middle school students and our our good role models in high school. So in in researching and in doing some of this this work, there were two, two districts that really garnered a little more attention. The first is Gateway. They went through a shift from having their school go from seventh to 12th grade a few years ago. And they noticed that they made this shift largely because of a similar theme in sixth grade of those students being quote unquote done with the elementary school. And this comes from their principal, not from me. They they also were able to kind of highlight and describe similar academic and curricular challenges of not having sixth grade in the same building, not being able to align that curriculum. The sixth grade team in the middle school teams wanted that collaborative teaming experience that the middle school would offer. And they felt that would benefit their students, similar to what we what we discussed last year and this year. And so to answer this, and I quite, you know, I didn't think about this much before. But it made a lot of sense when I was speaking with their with their principal is they developed what's called the sixth grade academy. So this is really, it builds a transition year into the middle school model. And what it is, is it takes that the sixth grade team and it allows them more autonomy and more focused time with that with that group of students. For for us, that middle school, that sixth grade academy would be having two core academic teachers rather than four. So having students have more time with fewer fewer faces, they felt that gateway that this would benefit benefit their sixth grade, would help facilitate that that transition year and help get those students into middle school, kind of a middle school like light model. They also felt that it would support team building and social emotional development. They are able to kind of build, build field trips around around building that community in their school. I I should note that in speaking with the principal, the the principal felt that the sixth grade academy, that model did did help students transition effectively. They felt that 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 step in there was really good for sixth grade. And it allowed them to make that make that move effectively and and succeed. And they and they, their data kind of at least social emotionally plays, you know, speaks to speaks to this. They have conducted student surveys and they have, we all kind of talk about the the sense of belonging that can exist. And they have found an increase in the sense of belonging among their sixth graders in their middle school as a whole, since they have have made that move a couple of years ago. It's still relatively new for them, but they, you know, they are, they are seeing that. And they they saw, they said that academically, having after school support and having having those those teachers be able to offer that has been a big benefit for their students, specifically for their sixth graders. And and now, after that year of transition, it has become kind of their their normal that that they didn't get much negative feedback once they made, once they made that switch. And that now it's become kind of routine for them. Another another district that I reached out to was Harvard. In Harvard, we reached out to them specifically because they're a smaller district, they're a municipal district, and they have done really well on standardized testing. They're they're a very successful district. They they really highlighted a few points when I spoke with them that having the full six to eight grade span has allowed the middle school to really develop its identity within a school. So they have really become more of a of a school within a school, more of a middle school since they had that approach. The they talked quite a bit about the team based approach, approach, having both horizontal meetings. So everyone who teaches a certain grade level, so all sixth grade, all seventh grade, all eighth grade teachers, but also vertical alignment to allow for some of those supports that work for a student in sixth grade to also be implemented in seventh grade and eighth grade to have that alignment over over several years. They said that it's allowed teachers to be even more attentive to students, which I think is a good goal for everyone. They mentioned that having a focused middle school experience aligns with the team's vision of where students should be by the end of eighth grade. So it allows teachers to say, middle school teachers to say, okay, we're getting these students in sixth grade with these skills. We want them to be here and and we're And and we're lucky in our in our case that we're in the same building as a high school. So we can take that data from high school and say, here's where we want kids to be. But allows them to kind of plan backwards and say, where are students coming in? Here's where we want them to leave and and kind of plan for that. In the bottom line with from Harvard, what they what they said is that having the middle school model allows teachers to know students well and to collaborate with colleagues around their needs. And I think that that sums it up quite nicely. It's had a big impact on student sense of belonging by in the data that they're seeing speaks for itself. So a few final thoughts before I I stop talking or we transition to questions. There continues to be broad support among the teaching staff administration here at Hetfield Public Schools, AGS and Smith Academy for the shift to take place. We believe that making that making this change will allow us to better serve our sixth grade students and have a more complete rounded out middle school model. And we have, we've seen from other districts that have successfully run similar models, even made the made the transition and made the change. And I've seen positive results, both social emotionally as well as academically for their students. Yes, please.
Hi. One more final comment, as I was thinking about some of the things that Connor had been sharing. You know, again, as we're thinking about scaffold and support, we have made a lot of effort in trying to get our fifth and sixth graders here to come up and see the kids here at the high school, the middle school. But they are literally sitting in the bleachers being incredibly passive. They watch. They're not able to participate because we don't allow them to do that. We just want them to get comfortable being here. But as sixth graders, they'd be able to actually participate and do all of those things. And then we can start bringing our fourth and fifth graders up to begin to see what it's like to make the walk over here to see the building, to not make it be this big scary place. And then at the same time, also, we have sixth graders who are buddies with first graders, and we have fifth graders buddies with kindergarten. And that age difference is no different. This is about being able to set kids up with mentors, models, to have these older kids take these younger kids under the wing and kind of guide them into what school environment is like. So it's not that really big of a difference between what we're already currently doing at the elementary school and what we're looking to do here for our sixth graders here at Smith Academy.
I'll add that we did have the sixth grade participate in tug of war last year, and I think they beat the staff. All right. And at this point, we'll open up to questions from from the committee, anything that we can help clarify or
Well, the committee all come back on screen. And thank you on behalf of the committee for the prep, for the homework, for the prep and homework, because we know that that's been happening and has been a fairly significant amount of work, not just last year, but through the summer and into this year. And I guess I want to kick off as we go into questions to also, you know, recognize that a lot came up last year, and I think it was really worthwhile to have the conversation. And I'm so glad it's back in discussion and that we're doing, we're having this conversation at the end of September. Because to the points that came out in public comment, people need to be prepared. And I think that was really one of the biggest issues we had as we closed out. Last last conversation was that we hadn't spent a year preparing kids. So I just want to recognize, acknowledge and appreciate that. And with that, I want to open this up for the committee to ask questions, but also recognizing that tonight is not a vote. Tonight is a conversation. It's an opportunity for us to hear public comments, where their concerns are, where the questions are, to ask the questions we have been hearing and that we have ourselves, and that this is going to come back again in October. So there is going to be more time for conversation because the community needs to be involved. We want the community involved as well. And so tonight is just more additional fact finding. And so with that, I've opened it up to the committee what your questions are and please take yourself off mute. So who wants to kick off? Because don't all speak at once, right? Okay.
Iman Green. I wanted to ask, you you touched base on a lot of subjects that students from sixth grades would be experiencing if they moved to middle school. How about foreign language? I didn't hear much about that. Would they be able to take a foreign language here in middle school?
So right now, our foreign language starts in eighth grade. We have students that that begin there and and kind of move up through high school. We we don't currently have the staffing to expand it down to seventh and sixth grade. That being said, we could possibly look at, look at the schedule and do kind of an exploratory option with our foreign language languages to see if the if, you know, kind of an introduction to French and Spanish. So students would kind of be be ready to ready to start. But currently, no, currently, we don't have time for that.
I have a quick question to start off here. Looking at the the draft schedule, it looked like Miss Shret and Miss Bailey would have four off periods. How would we utilize them during those times?
So the short answer to that is is no, they wouldn't have four off periods. So when when Miss Shret is teaching one class, half of the group of sixth grade, Miss Bailey would be teaching the other half. So those would be the academic classes. So A, B, C, and D block, we call those. We have two other blocks during the day. So either E, F, or F block, and then G block kind of floats through. And so teachers have, they have, they have five academic classes they teach typically, and then they have a duty block block and a prep block. So a duty block might be if there is coverage that's needed for another class. Or if we have them, you know, a teacher assigned to monitor the bathrooms or the halls during that time. We that could be an example of a duty. And then we have the the prep time as well. But all all teachers are assigned a full load. If if someone has a has a gap in there, given an an extra duty to support or a different class to class to teach.
I don't, if other people have them.
I think we all probably have a list. So if you have a couple, I'm just going to ask one that went along with the schedule.
So just speaking of the, you know, sample draft schedule, thank you so much. That was definitely something that I wanted to be able to visualize a little better. I find it very helpful to see that written out. I couldn't help but notice that the break time is at like nine thirty and then lunch is at ten forty-five in the morning, which I'm kind of assuming is so that they have an independent lunch, but I'd like to hear a little more about like how lunch works and who else would be in that in that space.
Sure. So lunch, this year, we have a middle school lunch and a high school lunch. We have seventh and eighth grade and then ninth through twelfth grade. With the addition of sixth grade, we would probably go back to having three lunch blocks. We would do a sixth and seventh, an eighth and ninth, and then a tenth through twelfth grade. So that would allow a little more, a little more break up there in connection with with age appropriate peers.
I'll pipe in with my schedule related question. So how does the schedule today, and I think you spoke to some of this, but I want to kind of try and put it into one question. How does the schedule that you outlined different for sixth graders than what they're doing right now?
The the primary difference is the number of electives that they are able to take part in. The, you know, right, right now, they have two core teachers. They have Miss Bailey and Miss Shret. That wouldn't, that wouldn't change. We would keep that, keep that piece that's working well in the high school, kind of mimic the the sixth grade academy that we heard on that that we heard worked well. The they have two full blocks of electives every day at the elementary school unless unless I'm mistaken. I believe they have one full block of electives every day. And so that'll it does. Yeah. So at the at the elementary school that, you know, you have PE, then you have art, and you have, you know, those all those elective blocks. Here we have E block and we have F block. So those two are two fifty minute blocks designed for that. And so they get, they get more exposure to more electives and on a more frequent basis. They also, that town would also include a skills block to help support study skills. So not just talking about English or math, but hey, this is, you have, we know you have a test coming up. Here's how you can develop your study skills to help, you know, help study for this test. Here's how we would recommend you taking notes and kind of going through those skills that are, quite frankly, they're they're important, they're really important, and they're also sometimes hard to get in when you have content to get through. And this would, this would allow for for that to be included within that elective rotation. I will say that when you look at the schedule, you see things like PE slash health slash something else, because there there is a rotation here too. So we are on a seven day rotation. So over the course of seven days, you might have PE for three or four of those days and health for for three of those days, or PE for for three, health for two and skills for for two. So so that that rotation, that that's how that works. So it's not a Monday through Friday schedule. It's a day one through day seven schedule.
So my follow up to this is, how does the schedule that you outlined different from what today's seventh graders are doing at SA, or if it's different?
It's it's not much different. The the primary difference is having those core teachers for the those core academic blocks. So having fewer pure teachers, teaching fewer, well, teaching those the same academic blocks. And that's a, you know, that that is that that's a benefit that I I don't think we went into quite quite enough last year. But we have seen play out with some of those districts that we've we've looked at. The the other difference is that right now, we don't have a a generalized skills class for seventh grade. They, you know, if students are identified as needing that, we can offer that support. But this would be, would allow us to have kind of a more generalized skills time for sixth grade to to help facilitate that transition.
Still kind of related to schedules. Looking at that schedule, I was wondering how much time would sixth graders actually spend with other middle school students? I mean, we've heard concerns about how they would spend time with high school students, but that schedule really is limiting them within sixth grade, other than lunch. What are other times in that schedule that they might be with a seventh grader or an eighth grader?
That's a great question. And and I I will mention too, when I was speaking with with Gateway in particular, that that district, their primary concern from from the community had been about limiting the sixth grade interactions within middle school. So having having a really kind of more 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 condensed sixth grade academy. But we have, there are a couple of times where that that could be happening. So art class, band class are times where we we may have we may have interaction there. X block is a time where students from the middle school is primarily from the middle school, but it could be from the high school as well. If there are, if there are other other clubs would would have interaction with each other. And those those occur daily. So those would be would be daily occurrences that that they'd have exposure. Again, that would be supervised time. It wouldn't be just kind of go for it. It would be structured to supervise within this way.
Sure. Feel free to cut me off. So going into the meeting that we had last year, when we had a lot of audience participation that night, and it seems like most of the audience that came that night, maybe excluding one or two, were largely in favor of the idea. And around that time, most of the feedback that I heard was largely supportive, or at worst, kind of ambivalent to the idea. Between then and now, whenever I interact with someone in the community who is hearing about this idea, it's at best ambivalent and more common negative to very negative. And just kind of making notes of things that I've heard, some valid, not, or some valid, some not necessarily valid, but concerns about sixth graders sharing a bus with upperclassmen, exposure to topics, not educational topics, but just conversational topics. Now at a sixth grade level that, you know, it would result in families having conversations with sixth graders that they were not quite prepared for that would have not happened necessarily until seventh or eighth grade, just things that they're picking up from their peers. Concerns that not many other schools have done this. You were giving us a couple of examples of it being done, but if it's, if it's such a a good idea, and I think you're presenting it, it your your presentation is great, and it sounds like a wonderful idea, but other schools don't seem to be jumping at this. You know, why hasn't like Frontier considered this, or Hadley or anyone else considered this? We would be kind of an outlier in doing it. And then a couple of my concerns that come up is how sustainable is the move if budgets get tighter going forward? And if it had to be undone, could it easily be?
I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to hit all those points. So the the first point was about the the interaction in in kids learning about things socially that they may may have not learned about for another year. In terms of the bus, I I would love to have enough bus riders at the middle high school where we had to designate, you know, sixth grade sits up here, seventh grade sits up here, all the way to the back of the bus. We currently are in a in a position where it's really easy to monitor what goes on on the bus because we have so few riders. Are, we're in communication with bus riders, with with the bus company and the bus drivers, whenever anything happens that does need to be addressed. In in those, those incidents are few and far between. We're we're able to get the video from, there's this video and audio that that goes with it from the buses whenever there are incidents. We could, we we could look at having more separation between the middle and the high school, where the middle school sits, you know, from rows one to eight, and the high school sits, you know, rows nine to, well, however far back they go. But but again, right now, the our our bus ridership is is low enough that you really can't hide. There's no, there's no opportunity for students to hide and and kind of get away with things on the bus right now. Just because we we have fewer kids. Can you remind me of your second question?
Is it fair to say that more of that happened on the elementary school bus? We have little, the the age range and the knowledge between a first grader and a sixth grader might have a greater sign of influence.
Yes. So there we have a much larger rate of students on the bus. I can tell you that the kindergartners have assigned seats at the front. And historically, it goes in progressively back to the back of the bus with the oldest students being in the back. So if there is going to be a conversation that should not be happening, it's probably going to end in the back and ending on the bus. It's not going to be in any other timeframe because for the most part, again, students are either supervised because our sixth graders or fifth graders are with buddies and the teachers are right there. Or we don't have sixth graders and fifth graders eating lunch with kindergartners and first graders. So that separation also isn't going to happen. So again, with social media, I can't always, I would love to say that, you know, kids are not on YouTube and doing things they shouldn't be, but we all know that that's not true. So you're always going to have that opportunity where there's going to be somebody who sees or sees, you know, has access to something and repeat something not knowing that it's appropriate or not appropriate. It's just a matter of being able to start doing that education and conversation.
Yeah, I was just going to comment that from experience, my second grader, last year, he was in second grade, loved hanging out with the sixth graders on the bus and came back with many inappropriate things. Yes, like that. Yes, like that's gonna happen, but also there's more of a chance of it happening with the sixth graders being near so many younger children. So I'm like, I would rather my, my younger kid didn't ride with a second sixth grader, honestly. Just because the huge difference between them and what they're doing, whether what they're watching on YouTube or what, the way they speak as well. And that's, that's, I feel like that's the kind of like you, you're gonna find it either, yeah, either they're getting, sixth graders are gonna be that influence on the younger kids, or they are also gonna be in that place when they are in middle school.
Can, can I, can I just add to that too? Just because it's something that I, I, I didn't mention, not because I wanted to not mention, but because I just didn't think about that right then. Most of our 11th and 12th graders, they drive. We, we, I cannot think of a single 11th or 12th grader who takes the bus, they either drive or they get picked up by friends and come in. So you're really talking about, you know, sixth through 10th grade at that point. And, and my experience has been that most of the time in a situation like the bus, the, the ninth and 10th graders, they're probably not going to want much to do with the, the sixth or seventh or even eighth graders. They tend to keep to themselves. And, and not, not want that interaction to happen.
My other questions were, why haven't more districts done this if it's as wonderful as an idea as we're, we're hoping it is? And then also just the sustainability of it.
Thank you. So, so in terms of why haven't more districts done it, I, I, I don't know. I know that the ones that, that I've, I've talked to, that again, I, I, I talked about those two that have done it. They've, they've had good experiences with it. I think doing it and doing it right is really important. And I, I wonder if maybe there just hasn't been the, the readiness on, on behalf of the teachers to do it. Because quite frankly, that's where, that's where this conversation started was with a, with a middle school team in a sixth grade team that wanted to do this change. When I talked with, when I talked with both Gateway, well, specifically with Gateway, but, but also in speaking with Harvard, I believe this to be the case. That's where, that's where the, the conversation started with them too. And they were able to do it well because we, they had that, that buy-in on behalf of the staff. And I, I, I may be assuming, and we all know the challenge with assuming, but I would, I would maybe assume that the, there hasn't been that level of, we want to do this on behalf of the staff.
I would just note that for some of the surrounding districts who are slightly more comparably sized or have sort of a elementary and then secondary setup, that their, their structure of their districts is different. So their elementary schools are actually separate districts, districts. Their teachers are on different contracts. So the ease and the fluidity of some of the staff bringing that, like, that's a very different world, I would guess.
Yeah. And I would add to that too, that when you're talking, when you're comparing regional districts, for example, you really are talking about the identity of some of these small towns. So if you have a K through six school in one town and, and you have four towns that are sending those school, those, those students to a regionalized middle high school. A, a, a lot of those small towns, having, having worked in, worked in them, they, they really have the identity within that, in that school. And so they, they tend to be maybe resistant to that kind of change. There may also be budgetary concerns. There may be space concerns. I know that I, I believe Amerist is, is thinking of moving this way to have a sixth, sixth or eighth grade middle school. And I know that's, when you have a separate middle school, that's typically the, the age range that you see in, in a middle school.
Can I ask?
John had a, a point there.
I just wanted to ask the clarifying question for Adam. Did you mean a sixth through 12 or a sixth through eight?
Six through 12.
Actually, just in, in the region where I live, I, I grew up in this kind of a model. It was a regional school district with a junior high school, a junior senior high school. And two of the districts that I've worked in, again, regional, they did have the same type of model where they were looking at one building, grade six through 12, and, and essentially either separate wings or half of the building, things were devoted. And one of the, the districts actually was constructing a new elementary school at the time and incorporated, I believe, grades four and five into that model for a two-year period and very successfully.
Yeah, I would add, when I taught, I taught sixth grade up at Turner's Falls, up at Great Falls Middle School, and they have a school within a school, sixth through eighth grade model. I then became principal at Gill Elementary School, which was in that district and was a K through sixth grade school, is the only K through sixth grade school. And there, there was a lot of pride in keeping sixth grade there. I can, that small town, you know, really wanted to, to keep it that way. Adam had two more questions, though, the question about the sustainability and then reversal, if need be. In terms of sustainability, I, I think, again, this should be a budget neutral kind of shift. And so if we needed to, if we needed to combine classes in one of those grade levels, we, you know, we could if the numbers needed, you know, necessitated that. The same as we could if it were at the elementary school or at the, at the middle high school or at the, at the high school level. So I don't, I don't see this as putting any additional strain. And I, I don't see any budgetary strain. And I don't see this as something that would change how we would approach budgetary, you know, either, either cutbacks or, or constraints, one way or the other. And in terms of reversal, I, I don't, I, I mean, the, the, the experience when talking to districts that had gone through this is that people, you know, it became kind of what was done and, and, and that was that. If, if there were, if, if there were a lot of really pressing reasons to reverse it, I, I would think it would go through a similar process that make them, this is how, make, making the change to move it would go through is, is okay, we've tried this, maybe it's not working. And the committee could put it, you know, put it to a vote to make that shift back. I don't, I don't think it would happen mid-year. I think that would be something that would, we would want if we were to go, you know, if we were to make this change, then want to go back, I would think that would, we would, for the sake of everyone, want to do it in a way that is, you know, a logical kind of breaking point.
My concern, just a couple of follow-ups. My concern was more if, if enrollment continues to slowly decline at Smith Academy and the town decides to make a change to how we do secondary education here, is it an easy enough thing to reverse if we had to? And then on my other point, when we were facing perhaps rather draconian budget cuts a couple of years ago, one of the things that was on the table was, was eliminating the middle school model. Does this make the middle school model any more or less sustainable in face of that kind of a situation?
Thank you. So, so the, the first question, if, if the decision were made at a town level at some point to regionalize, then they would have to look at what the, you know, what the entrance age is at that, at that school. So if it were a, you know, if it were a seventh through 12th grade school, in, again, I, I want to make sure that everyone knows that that's not a conversation we're having and it's not on the table. And it's not, you know, but, but were that to happen, that would be, you'd have to look at, look at the starting age for, for the school. And then we'd have to find a place, you know, for the sixth grade, if it didn't start till seventh grade. And in terms of sustainability, that's something I hadn't thought of in terms of, of if, if that, and I think it would make the middle school model more, more sustainable if we had, if, if we saw our enrollment continue to decline because, simply because we would have more staff licensed at the appropriate, at the appropriate grade band. So I think it would, would allow us potentially, and, and again, this is, this is that, this is not something that we're, that we're, we're seeing hopefully. But it would allow us to potentially weather that a little easier than if sixth grade were not at middle school.
So I just want to, I may generally look toward the audience to confirm this recollection. When we talked about this in the spring, am I remembering correctly that we had more students? We were losing more students to the district who were leaving for going to, into a middle school at sixth grade. I'm seeing lots of head nodding. So in terms of the sustainability impact, one of the possibilities is we actually keep more students in the district by moving sixth grade into a secondary environment.
Yeah, and I think that's an important piece. To be, to be fair and fully transparent, there's, we don't have a comparison for if folks would leave because sixth grade is here. I mean, that, that's, we, we just don't have, have that information. But we do know in having polled students, families who have, have choice elsewhere for their students in fifth and sixth grade, that a number of families have expressed that they are looking for more of a middle school model and more of a, a larger kind of school experience. And so we have, we have seen that and we have seen, we have seen that is kind of the second, the second largest area of, of student loss from our current students. So the, the largest is the, the shift to ninth grade where we have a number of both school applicant applicants. But that has, has in recent years been the, the, a close second.
Just now that we're talking about sort of just the sustainability of this and sort of like looking forward to how this would be if implemented, I'm wondering from administration, what your thoughts have been on, like, if we do implement this, how are we going to measure if it's successful? Like, what, what specifically are we looking for? And how do you see us sort of keeping track? And like, see that we want to, you know, see how it's going, I guess.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good question. So there, there are two primary areas where I think we would like to, you know, like to see success. The first is academic, and the second is in that sense of belonging or, or that, you know, that cohesion. So we would look at, we, we look at student surveys. So we have surveys that go out that we measure kind of social, emotional learning with. We're, we're getting a, I believe the desk is a tool that can more, more accurately kind of quantify that data, which is inherently hard data to quantify because it's about feel. We could look at test scores, so both MCAS, but also our, our district measures, the I-Ready and, and just quite frankly, teacher assessments and how well kids are rating and how well they're doing on projects and how, how, how invested they are in their learning, how they're setting their own goals. Are they achieving the goals that they're setting for themselves? So those things that really, they're, they're harder to dive into, but they're, they are what our team dives into all the time. And enrollment, I mean, that's, that's the, the biggest, you know, the, the biggest challenge we're facing right now, I think, is the district. And this, this is a place where we have seen our enrollment decline. And so as we make this change and we look at it, we would like to see students staying in, you know, in, in from fifth, sixth grade, from sixth to seventh grade and, and staying with our district. And, and from eighth grade on, you know, you know, really kind of have that, that full, those, those full three years to, to bring them into the Smith Academy community.
So I'd like to hear a little bit more about students who get services. So I think we're, we, we probably, this committee at least has a fair idea of services available at Hefield Elementary and families who figure out by the time they get their kid to sixth grade, they like, that's a fairly well-oiled and it feels really stable. And I, I can imagine concern moving their kid and what do services look like? And, and how are they different when they get to Smith Academy? And I will call out in particular, reading, knowing that we've seen across the state, not just us, some issues with reading for kids who were in that core age right now. They were learning to read when COVID hit, and so reading may be a little bit behind. We've seen that in state numbers. What does that look like if we move sixth grade up to Smith Academy? So broad and specific, I guess.
So we're able to, we're able to meet students' needs here on their IAPs. We, we do, between sixth and seventh grade, we do amend IAPs so that the services reflect the hours in our, in our classes. So if, you know, our, our classes are 50 minutes long. So, so that's the primary way that we amend IAPs. And as, as students make progress, the goal is always, as, is, is for students to make progress to eventually come off IAPs. That, that, that's the goal. The I, I don't foresee a, a problem meeting, meeting students' needs here. If we make the shift, we have, I, I believe we have enough, enough staff to do it. I will say, one, one difference that we're able to make here when it, when it comes to supporting students is we talk about the duty blocks that our staff has. Oftentimes we'll have licensed teachers who are able to kind of co-teach. So if we have a student who struggles in math, in, instead of having, and this doesn't happen all the time, but instead of having a paraprofessional, we may have another math teacher who is able to push into that class and work with a small group or work with a student to help provide extra support. So we're able to provide licensed, licensed teachers oftentimes where, where that's not necessarily the case. In terms of, of reading, the same thing. We have, you know, we have those skills blocks. We have, if students have skills on the blocks on their IAP, typically they are specific skills. It's not just, you know, skills. It's English skills, literacy skills, it's math skills. It's, it's focused so that they have a skill, it's study skills if they have it. So it's, they have a, a specific focus on what, what they, what they need. And so if we need to increase the number of skills classes, we, we would do that. But again, within our schedule, I think we'll, we'll be able to, to, to meet these.
Also, just to let you know that, you know, again, this is behind the scenes, so most parents might not be aware. Every spring, we have transition meetings. So the special education team from the middle school comes to the elementary school and they meet. And they're talking in, about the students and what their needs are before they even leave the school to go up to the middle school. So those meetings happen every spring so that the teachers are well aware of what students' needs are before they get up to the middle school.
Thank you. We've, we've spent appropriately spent the most of our time this evening talking about sixth grade. But I have a question for both principals really about what this change would mean for other grades. So this would have an impact in different ways and would love to hear your thoughts about what that might look like.
So I can tell you that at least in the elementary school, we would continue to do the same scaffolding that we've been currently doing for our sixth grade students. So fourth grade would continue to be departmentalized where they would switch for science and social studies. And our fifth grade teachers would continue to be doing the departmentalization where two teachers are teaching two different subjects and kids are switching. And they have also built in a skills block so that kids are understanding that you need to go to your locker. When you go to your locker, make sure you have your pencil and your binder because you can't be taking that next thing with. So all of that is built in. They spent a lot of time getting kids ready and understanding that that's a, a skill that they're going to need for when they transition into the, the middle school, high school. We would again, continue to work on getting our fourth and then, then fifth graders to come up to do visits to the Smith Academy, just again, to be seeing what it's like. So it's not as daunting of a, a task or idea to come here to visit and to see it when they finally get here. So I think those continued scaffolds will strengthen their ability to feel more comfortable making that move.
Are there other benefits or challenges when you move a whole block of students out of that building?
So you just to kind of talk about special ed a little bit, there really is a 60-40 split between the two buildings. And, and essentially in its simplest form, you've got two full-time special ed teachers at Smith Academy and two full-time special ed teachers at, at HES. So by moving grade six, you kind of equalize those caseloads a little bit. And, and there is quite a bit of work on, on kind of like another path that we could be doing with, with inclusion. And that might give us more of an opportunity, flexibility for, for a greater level of inclusion with. with making that that kind of a change.
I mean, I think that's something that really hasn't come up much is that there's some upside for all students downstream of those sixth graders because they
Yes, so the the short answer to that question is more opportunity. We would bring bring two more teachers into our teaching community here, which means potentially four additional X blocks that could be offered. So the X blocks are typically, they're they're either passion projects of staff here. Right? If you have someone who really likes fly fishing, they might create a fly fishing club. But we have other other clubs. We have, in in typically, they're they're either passion projects of teachers or real collective interest of students where they might come to a teacher and say, hey, Ms. Case, we really, really want to do cheerleading. There you go. And in in which case, we we would be able to to honor that. And by having two additional staff, it adds, we have two X blocks that we run every seven day rotation. And so it would add potentially four more, four more X blocks to that mix. It it would also allow, we talked about the schedule and, you know, those, the the number of, a number of preps and the number of classes, it would allow potentially other electives to be offered. You know, right now, during the middle school band walk, we have band and art that are offered. We, I would love to offer another kind of steam class in that mix. And by having, having more staff that are not already obligated to their, you know, the contractual maximum, we would be able to potentially do that. So so in addition to giving sixth grade the opportunity to to have more, more of that middle school experience and more electives, that kind of thing, it also would have the same impact the rest of the middle school and potentially high school too.
So when you've been exploring this, have you spoken to students about their their thoughts?
I I have. Primarily last year. I I haven't really got into it with students this year. Mostly, it at least what they told me, which again, may, you know, may not be the most candid time, was pretty ambivalent. It wa- it wasn't like we're really psyched to get the sixth grade up here. We can't wait to, can't wait to do it. But it was like, yeah, it it works great. If it doesn't, great. There was, there was that, I I would say ambivalent would be there.
Are there other questions from the committee?
Question for, you just talked about the high school students. Have we heard from them, their opinion? I mean, I can say I have a fifth grader this year and he is, would love to be in middle school next year. In his reasons, for for both of us, it'd be a little more challenge in academics and having that experience with other peers who are a bit older. But also, I would like to hear if you've heard from other, I mean, I've heard from my child, but I would like to hear from and your child from if there had been any comments from fifth and sixth graders.
I I can speak from from last year's conversations is that they they were pretty excited about it. And and a lot of families echoed that. They, you know, when I talked with them, because I I spoke with every fifth grade family last year. And a lot of families echoed that. They said, they said, well, you know, we were a little nervous when we talked to, talked to Connor about this and he was psyched. So, yeah, I think it'd be a good idea. But yeah, I would say that among the fifth graders last year, so current sixth grade, there there were, there was a lot of positivity.
And Ms. Petra, any, are you hearing anything in the hallways of?
I have not, because I also haven't really sat down and surveyed any of them or had one-on-one conversations.
And I would add, just so the the committee and the community knows that that that's been intentional. We wanted tonight to be kind of a, well, actually, we wanted a couple of weeks ago when I couldn't be there and I apologize for that. We wanted that to be kind of the kickoff for the conversation of this year. So to for for this event to be that. So so those conversations will will happen now that that this has happened.
This conversation.
That was my last thing I wanted to ask about, was how we're going to engage with the current fifth grade going forward, but it sounds like we're planning to.
Can we engage with families younger than fifth grade as well?
Absolutely. Yeah, I I I think we, I think we should. I I will say that I I suspect that if we talk to current and I suspect based on last year's experience, that if we talk to current kindergarten families, they, the younger the students were, the the more opposed to the shift families tended to be. And as as their students were older, the more in favor families tended to be. Because honestly, I mean, I have a, I have a seven, almost eight-year-old. I've never seen her as a fifth grader. And so I I I wouldn't know what that experience might be for her. And so without that, it's hard to, it's hard to have any barometer to to measure how the the change might go. But yes, I think we should, we should also talk to Smith Academy families as well. So younger, older, all the the whole community.
That that kind of aligns with feedback that I've either received or kind of overheard that the younger the the students that families have, that the more apprehensive they are about this, you know, that their their student won't be emotionally ready in sixth grade because they have a second or third or first grader. Or I I've I've gotten a couple of people who who feel like there's there there's still this this dialogue that, you know, this is more about like subterfuge and like, you know, playing a shell game with the numbers and things like that. Which I I I hope that your presentation kind of puts that off because I I think it's clear we're not doing it for a reason of just moving numbers around or anything, or trying to trick someone into staying that otherwise may not have. But I I think definitely engaging younger than fifth grade would would help build that.
Yeah, we could, we can absolutely do that. And and just to to hammer that point home, no, this is this, this is a a enrollment, at this point, enrollment neutral. Potentially, I mean, anyone can add from one call and subtract from another. I mean, that's really what we'd be doing.
Yeah, I would like to encourage us to, when we can, when we have those younger families, to also probably have some Smith Academy families in the room. Because I think that's, for me as a parent who, you know, again, I don't know what my kid looks like as a fifth grader quite yet. Hearing from people who are like, let me tell you what this looked like when my kid was a sixth grader that became a seventh grade, like that perspective was really helpful. So hearing like we did tonight from Stewall and others. And also just understanding that our sixth grade teachers have been watching sixth graders for many years. And they know what sixth graders look like year in and year out. And and that's been really valuable to hear. So and I I will just also acknowledge that the committee has heard from several teachers who weren't with us this evening that we have heard from in writing. Two oh one, they have all been highly supportive. So we thank all of them for reaching out as well. And with that, we're going to move on in our agenda this evening. If there is anyone who's with us that needed to move on, we understand if you don't want to spend your whole evening tonight at the school committee meeting, we won't thank less of you if you leave.
But we are really fun.
But we are fun.
Thank you all for coming.
So with that, do we have a conversation about trips, Smith Academy travel?
Oh, thank you all for putting, putting those back. So I we I don't have anything to present for a vote tonight, but I can give a little bit of a kind of preview of of what we're looking at for trips this year. So the band trip is looking at developing a a longer trip and they're looking at a Washington DC band experience. So there's a festival down there that that they they would like to go to. So they've done Philadelphia in the past. And this, this one is something that's in DC and they seem pretty excited about that possibility. And Ms. Gardner is in the final stages of putting that package together. It would it it, I think it would be in May, April or May. So it would be far enough out to 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 do that. And and the trip, I will say, would not duplicate anything that we would have done or would do on our Washington DC trip. So they they've taken care to make sure that when when we kind of go in our rotation to Washington DC, that they'll have a unique experience. Our school trip this year that we're looking to do, and again, this goes back to the conversation that we we had a couple of years ago about doing kind of a bigger trip to a different destination every year. We're looking at New York City this year, which would be, we'd get down to, well, New York City and and some kind of New Jersey islands. We'd be getting into Ellis Island and Staten Island. We'd be getting to the Statue of Liberty. We'd be seeing Broadway, a Broadway show and really kind of jam packing into a couple of days, the New York experience, which I think would be would be great for a lot of our kids. And then the senior trip, this is to be determined what the destination will be. But they're talking about doing a a specific class senior trip, which I think would be great for them. I think that that's a kind of a tradition that I'd like to, like to kind of rekindle is having a a big destination trip in senior class, doing the fundraising for it, making sure that it goes off the hitch.
Within the United States or?
Yes, yeah, they would, they would, they would, would be a domestic trip. Yep. I I I'm confident in saying the lower forty-eight as well. Oh, we we, so we're looking at, we're we're looking at probably an April, April time for that trip as well. The 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 challenge is athletic scheduling. And so looking at making sure that we're, we're trying to schedule in a time that's not right at the beginning of the season because we want those, you know, we want the the practice, they have to practice for ten days before they can be eligible to play a game. But not too late in the season because we'll start to have makeup games, that kind of thing. So we're looking at trying to figure out what the the perfect time is for that.
Is is there also, I know we voted in the past about like the Spanish classes?
A trip for this year, no. They they, they did one last year, they did one the year before. So they're typically, they do it every other year. They they, they had partnered with Hopkins. Frankly, because Hopkins, they only had three students sign up for their trip and they couldn't run it without a kind of a core group. And then we had we had like eighteen of our, or so, you know, we overwhelmed that trip. Not overwhelmed, they they had a great time and they they were, did a great job partnering together. But to get back into that every other year routine for us would allow a larger group to go from the eleventh and twelfth grade, which would keep the costs low.
Thinking about timing of the trips, is there a school play or musical this year? And would these trips fall in line with that kind of schedule?
There, there is. We haven't, we haven't made any decisions on what it will be yet. But we are planning to run a school, another musical this year. But and yeah, we would, we would coordinate with with them. So we would run the trips during the time when, you know, it's right up, right before the show or during it.
I would just note that I hope that class advisors are having really clear communication with students about what trips might look like and what are planned. Only because we saw a fair amount of angst and heartbreak when plans changed that probably were designed to be different, but maybe not everybody figured that out until late in the year. So if we can make sure that as these get scheduled, that that's really clear to all the families so that they are just all great.
Yep. Yeah, absolutely. We would do that.
So moving on to administrative reports, but really just looking to hear the district and Smith Academy report. I think you can hit the highlights. In fact, I might just look to see committee members, do you have specific questions?
My single question is outlined in a sub.
Okay, so let's just stick to the subpoints, which are my school bucks, enrollment and staffing.
It's starting to feel a little bit like fusion power, but but like hypothetically, within like two to three weeks.
Yeah, I would say, you know, this week, we should be able to have the, you know, have have the dates and costs all ironed out. And then it will just be a matter of them, I believe, hitting a button to make it, make it go and we can, and we'll put it on our website.
So nobody's paying for October on my school bucks, but by November? One more check.
Another subpoint.
Enrollment, we have, we're we're still similar to where we were at the beginning of the year. We have one hundred and six students right now at Smith Academy. And we have just about two hundred, two hundred and three at the elementary school. So our our enrollment is is down this year a little bit. We did have thirty-nine school choice people who chose to come here, applicants. We one family of two, after a week, they couldn't make the, they couldn't make the commute work. So we're we're down to thirty-seven new school choice students this year, which is good. That's, I mean, that's a, that's a target number that we had had set two years ago to get forty students a year, which is great. Total enrollment, I believe we're down about nine students this year. And that, that, and you know, that, that's not good news for, you know, for a district that's struggling with enrollment. Comparatively, it it is a softer hit than the last few years when we have been down a lot more students. And so we're hopeful that through, you know, through a lot of different things, we'll be able to recruit more students. One thing that I wanted to highlight, because I think this is it's included in the reports, but I really wanted to, wanted to talk about it a little bit because I'm excited about it. And I think it will help with enrollment is a partnership that sort of came about as we were looking at an Innovation Pathways Grant. So as I was exploring the Innovation Pathways Grant, a couple of schools, colleges and universities were recommended to me about having kind of really good programs for outdoor education, outdoor management, that kind of thing. So I reached out to Vermont State University and they had said, well, yeah, we we don't really do dual enrollment with, you know, virtual stuff. But what we have done is with some other private schools in in northern Vermont is actually accredited some of their teachers, either master's level or above teachers to teach college-level courses. And that's something that they're, they're interested in doing with us too. And so we would be able to offer in-house on our schedule, college-level courses for our juniors and seniors. So they could take a Vermont State University course and get credit for that course while here in the building at Smith Academy, from our teachers who have submitted and had their syllabi approved. And we could, in in theory, we could, we could have, you know, a different, different course kind of every semester. And so we're we're in conversations with them about that now. And we're talking with staff about developing those courses and and having that that work done this year. So we're able to do that. And I think it could be a real benefit to our students because the biggest challenge that we have when we're pushing dual enrollment for either, e- even Smith College right down the road is, well, we don't, I don't want to leave school. I don't leave school. I don't want to miss another class to take a college, college class. I don't want to, I don't want to leave school, I don't want to miss another class to take a college, college class. Um, and this would, this would alleviate that. Um, so they would get that, that high level course, they would get the, the credit for it. Um, and it's a benefit, you know, this is, this is something that originated on the uh VSU side because they're struggling with enrollment at the secondary level, especially in northern rural Vermont too. Uh, and so this allowed them to kind of get outreach to um schools in their area and now, now beyond their area. Uh, so that students have that kind of foot in there too.
It was just a really top line.
Top line idea of what types of classes you're talking about?
So, y- yes, and um, because they really opened it pretty wide. Um, they said, you know, you, we, here are, are introductory level courses that, you know, you can look at. And, and there's a whole cat, whole catalog. Um, so we, we could do anything from uh social sciences, from um, you know, psychology, sociology, which we've offered here in the past. Um, we could do history classes, we could do advanced math classes, you know, right now we have an AP calculus class, they have a college level calculus class. I'm, I'm sure there's a lot of kind of overlap there. Um, so thi- this initially came out when I was looking at the innovation pathway for uh out, outdoor adventure leadership. Um, and those courses were focused on, you know, some, some finance courses or some um public speaking kinds of courses. And, in, in my conversation with them, they said, well, actually, you, you, you really, you know, have your teachers look at these because if there's something that they feel strongly about that they'd like to offer, we would, we would be interested in um, in kind of validating, it's not the right word, but, but, but approving that, that course and the syllabus to be, to be offered to our students.
So that would be dual enrollment, you'd be getting your high school requirements and college credit?
Yes, yeah, and, and so high school requirements, college credit with, you know, the, those credits would definitely transfer to the Vermont State School System. Um, but they may also transfer to other universities, depends on the, you know, we can't control what a university will or will not give credit for. Um, but a student could graduate with, you know, those, with a transcript from the courses that they've, they have taken, uh potentially with a whole semester under their belt. Um, because they, if they take a course each semester of their junior and senior year, that's, that's four courses.
Uh, what is the interest? Like, this sounds like a great idea. Um, but you do have to have buy-in from your teachers. Uh, do you, have you, do you have teachers who are interested in this or?
Yes, we do. Um, we have a lot of interests. Or um, for two reasons. Um, A, I think it, it, you know, i- it's just kind of cool to be able to do that. And our teachers are excited, all of our teachers with, with a few exceptions have master's degrees or above. Um, and this kind of, it's a, almost a validation where it's like, yeah, you know, we, we trust that you're, you're able to teach at this high level. Uh, and we've seen it day in and day out, and now this is kind of an, an, an outside um entity saying, yep, we, we acknowledge that as well. And, and we're able to do that. And, and secondly, our teachers, they, they feel the enrollment crunch too in a very big way. Um, and this is something that I think they're excited about to be able to offer uh that they, they think could help enroll them.
How can you fit these college level courses into our current schedule? Or would this be in, in lieu of an AP course with the options AP at the end? Or would this be something else that you just have to just find a way to squeeze in? Because you still have to have like, you know, if, if they have a college level English class, you still have to have a basic level English class.
Yep. Yeah, so, so that's a great question. And so there, there are two ways. The first is to uh, to work within our AP schedule, uh, because AP classes are really designed to be college level introductory classes. So we could have students take a college level course uh and, and take an AP exam without having to go through that, you know, the, the specific AP curriculum. Um, the AP curriculum is a, is a really good guideline and it aligns directly with the AP test. Um, but I, I'd be confident if our students were taking college level classes that they could, you know, they could sit in on an AP test for that, um, for that subject and, and do well. Um, and, and if, i- the, the other piece is if we, if we do have any, any gaps right now, uh, and we also have a provision in the contract for if teachers would like to teach an additional course. Um, but if we have any, either any gaps in the schedule, or we have teachers who are interested in teaching that additional course, uh, we have provisions for that that they could, they could do from the schedule.
Can I just? Can I just clarify on that because you brought up the AP thing and I think I got lost? Um.
Yes.
Actual credit.
Yep.
So they don't have to take it.
They don't.
So they don't have to get it, the college transcript. Alright. Yeah, except at Vermont State University, exactly. So they could still sit for one because it's like a standardized, but, okay.
Because you're, you're guaranteed to get college credit with an AP score of four or five. Nope, nope.
You, you used to be. Um, it's, it's school by school now. So some colleges do, some colleges don't. Some colleges will give you credit, but not have it take the prerequisite or the, you know, the introductory things you still have to take of course, even though you have, have credit. So it really is school by school. Um, yes, so staffing, we are uh fully staffed here at the uh middle high school at Smith Academy. We're looking for um, three or four ESPs. Four ESPs uh and, and one teacher at the elementary school. We had a resignation last week. Um, I believe we have an interview set up for that, for a Wednesday, um, for that position.
Now questions? Question?
That was my question.
That was your question? Okay. Any other administrative related questions? Okay. Um, so we're going to move on to superintendent goals. And my apology to the committee, there is an update to these and Dr. Driscoll has copies to share with us. I'm going to give everybody just a quick chance to look at those. Um, given that there are some updates.
I can, I can share what the update is too, so you don't have to, have to find it. Um, it's under goal three and it's into the benchmarks and it's a benchmark specifically around um, goal, uh key action, goal three, action item four.
Dr. Driscoll, for the sake of anyone who might come along and get all the way to the nine o'clock point of our meeting, could you share a brief highlight of your proposed goals for the year with the committee?
You bet, yeah, so there are, there are four goals outlined here. Um, and they're broken down into a couple broad categories. The first goal is around entry. Um, that is a goal that is really um, it's a first year superintendent goal. That is uh the, the new student induction program encourages all new superintendents to have. Um, and so it's about creating the entry plan, entry process and entry plan and the summary of the report that will be delivered to the committee. The second goal is around professional practice. Uh, and again, this is, this is a goal that the, the new uh, the, the um, M A S S Massachusetts School Association of School Superintendents encourages all um super, new superintendents to have is participation in the new student induction, new superintendent induction program. Um, and so that's a lot of professional learning that, that goes along with it. The third student, uh, third goal is a, is a focus on relationships, connections and belonging. Um, and so this, this uh goal looks at um, developing structures within the, within the schools to uh increase, in, increase interaction between the schools and the community to uh utilize our, our students in our community to help um foster relationships um between them and our new, new students and new families. Um, to increase the uh, the, the amount of offerings in uh assemblies and, and programs that we have focused on belonging uh among our students. Um, in, in, to work with administration, um, both in, in the, especially at, and the, at the elementary level. Um, to uh a, address some of the kind of more common conduct violations uh that we've seen over the last couple of years and, and systematically be able to address um, it, address those challenges. Uh, the fourth goal is student learning. Um, and it is around uh improving outcomes, academic outcomes for students. Um, so it, it, it's not just about, you know, MCAS scores will go up, uh, or I rated scores will go up, but about, you know, here are the steps that we're taking to ensure that we're calibrated. We're looking for the same things when we go into uh, into classrooms, uh, the impact that has on student learning and then on, on student outcomes.
Thank you. Um, so committee, you know, this is one of our primary focus areas for, for any school committee. Is it, is management at superintendent? And this is the process by which we do this. So um, we're taking a look at the goals in September. We um are scheduled to come and do a mid-year check-in, I think it's in, it's on the schedule for either December or January. Uh, and then we'll do a review um before the election cycle so that the same committee members will be part of that process at the end. And you're familiar, familiar with what that review process looks like. Um. Are there, this is something that we vote on this evening. So questions, requests, thoughts? Well, if we look at goal number four on student learning, um, I see the action steps and the benchmarks in general. But can you be more specific about how the committee will measure that? So it. What, what's the goal? How do we know if we succeeded?
So I'll, I'll be able to provide um minutes of meetings or a schedule of meetings that have occurred, uh, where we have, have data meetings. Um, the summary of kind of our, our experiences during learning classes. Um, I, I can share our, our kind of the joint sheet that we're, that we're using to do those. Um. The, I can provide updates about the evaluation cycles for uh staff, you know, kind of where we are with observations. Um, where we are with, with, within that process and, and make sure that we're, we're on top of that. Uh, that's a topic that is on our, on our administrative meetings every, um, re, re, every other week as well.
So. So we could, I guess I'm looking for measurable things on that kind of, so by contract, we outline the number of staff that would have an evaluation in a given year. Kid, or, so evaluation, check-ins and progress, are we going to be at a hundred percent of contract? Or, I mean, I, I'm looking for the like, just literally, how do we measure that?
I'm sorry, I'm taking notes here as we're talking. Exactly, yeah, we could say that we, you know, we will meet and exceed our contractual obligation of observations and evaluations.
Because that's a literally measurable, it's not a binary, we, we checked the box, but like, we got all X number done.
So I'm looking at this and I understand that this is like for the entire school year. So at the top of every goal, it doesn't say like by the end of the year, which is, which is fine. Um, but I'm sort of wondering um, like how you are breaking this down incrementally? Like we're going to be doing a mid-year check-in and are there certain aspects of this you're going to be prioritizing first?
Sure, so, so the um. Um, I apologize for having been muted in the last question for anyone watching. Uh, so the question was about breaking down the, the action steps and outcomes. So a lot of the action steps are throughout the year. Um, so for example, that, the goal one entry, uh, there's, there are specific dates about that. We've already done the entry plan, um, and there's kind of a timeline for each goal. What I have, um, a- a- and I, I could share this, I I, I may want to share an abbreviated version, version because I have kind of like notes that, that are, that are in there about each thing. Um, but I have a, a spreadsheet, my spreadsheet, my spreadsheets with the, you know, anticipated date where it started, anticipated date completed, um, and kind of outcomes on that. So for each kind of um, action step, it's a um, a logic model that I, I just have created. So I, I have that and I could, I could share that, I, I just would like to share a um. I, I would like to make sure it doesn't have kind of identifiable data in there or, or, you know, information about, you know, observations of, on these teachers, not these, that, that kind of thing.
I guess for me, I'm sort of more wondering like, not so much about like your personal plan for it, but also like if there are goals on here that are going to be completed before the end of the year or what we can expect in a mid-year, like one example is like goal three on benchmark one, it's like about an events calendar, like is everything just coming, thing just coming May?
No, no, so, so yeah, it, so that, you know, those, right, yeah, so tho- those pieces have either, you know, there are some pieces that have may, may already be done, so the events calendar, and, and we may add to that throughout the year. But, you know, we have, we know when our big school events are, we know when our open houses were or are, um, those kinds of things.
I'm looking at just uh goal three benchmark, I, well, now I'm numbering at five.
Yep.
Um. A twenty-five percent reduction in overall students being referred to the office for conduct violations and a thirty percent reduction, am I unmuted? I am. Uh, and rates per month of individual students being referred to the office multiple times. How, how do you get to that goal?
So, the, um, so there, there's two different parts of that here. So there's one part is like overall as a school where we have, you know, X number of students that were referred to the office in September or October. Uh, and, and say that's, you know, say that's ten students. Um, we'd like to see, or, or sorry, ten, ten referrals. So it could be, you know, you have the same student that's been referred four times. Um, and, and that, but that's all, that, that's all counted together and that, the total number, number of referrals. Um, so we want to see a decrease in that because we want students to be meeting with success in the classroom. The other piece is for those students that may have been sent down multiple times or referred multiple times, you would like to see individual um decreases in, in those numbers. So if Connor was sent down to the office four times in September, uh, the goal would be that, you know, over the course of the year, he's, you know, sent down fewer times to the office. Um, the, the, the twenty-five percent or thirty percent, those numbers, they came from um what I thought could be um attainable. I mean, I, I would love to say we're going to have a hundred percent reduction in office referrals. Um, I don't think that's realistic, um, but I think, you know, having uh, having these two focus areas, specifically that, that second focus area, um, a reduction in those kind of students that have been referred multiple A reduction in those kind of students that have been referred multiple times, we'll see a reduction in the overall referrals too.
So what is the benchmark data for that? Is that versus a year ago? Is that versus September?
I, I would like these to be your goals. So I would like to look at, I, I don't think necessarily September is. Is, is the right one. I think maybe we'd do a September, October combination. There, there's often times a honeymoon period for, for students. So I think having a two-month kind of baseline would be a good place to start. And then having a, having a two-month, you know, period at the end of the year would be.
So a May-June collection and a September. Okay.
Well, the collection would be, would be year long. So, I mean. We've all been in school, you know, the summer and we sometimes see an uptick. So, you know, we'd like to see that, we'd like to see that, that kind of stated decline, even if there is a slight uptick at the end.
Is this meant as a means of tracking how well we're supporting our students or how well we are? How well our staff is working to support our students? I don't know if I worded that right, but I think you know what I mean.
Yeah. No, that's a really good question. And I think it, the way I have it, it doesn't, doesn't break it out by that. But I, I think we would like to see that decrease because of both reasons. So we'd like to see our, our staff feeling that their professional development and that their, you know, their, their toolbox. Of how they can better support all students. We'd like to see them being and feeling more effective. In doing that. And we'd also like to see our students developing those, their own tools and their own. Coping and making sure that they're, they're meeting with success too. And, and, you know, the, that, that we have our, the, the right services for our right students. You know, if, if it takes, it sometimes takes a little while to figure, okay, Connor is, you know, this is going on with Connor. These are the supports that he needs. It takes some time to figure that out. But, you know, as that's figured out, as those tools are being utilized, we should see the data reflect that. That's not a great answer because it's not, it's, it's, it's not, not broken out like that. But I'd like, I, I'll have to think about how we can, how we can collect that to distill further. What the, and what the cause in that overall decrease is.
Do we have the requisite PD lined up for staff for this to be a reality this year?
I think we do. I know at the elementary school, we have a lot of responsive classroom training that's, that's going to be and coaching that's going to be. Helping. I know up here we have a lot of trauma-informed instruction, instructional practices that will be, will be happening. That, that kind of creates a more kind of general atmosphere of support. And, and we have provisions placed at both schools to, to help. Identify what works with students and help teachers get, put those, those pieces into practice through the B S T process and through the, the team processes. But the short answer to your question is, is, is I don't know. This is the first time we've done this. And so, you know, it, it, it may be that, you know, when we, I hope is that all of these goals are met. That, that all the benchmarks are met and that everything is, yeah, you, you've met or exceeded all these goals. But I've, I, I've been an evaluator in the place where, okay, didn't meet this goal. So what, you know, what is that? How does that inform what, what we do going forward? How do we, you know, what is that? What does that mean? And how can we make sure that that is, you know, it's not something like, oh, you just, you didn't meet it. So we're, we're just moving on. Okay. If it, if it, if for some reason one of these goals isn't met, how can we, how can I put more, more pieces in place to help meet it in the future? Because these are all goals that shouldn't be going anywhere. It's not, they're not one and done, one and done kind of goals, nor should they be.
So I, I will speak generally that. This is, I don't know, my fourth set of, I'm, I'm trying to track how many different superintendents. We have seen goals from, and my number is much smaller, lower than others. But it's by far the most. Attuned to what our district needs. And not as generic as I have seen others. And for that, I'm very grateful. Yeah. So I, I appreciate that it's both practical in the sense of looking at entry and professional practice. And some of the stuff that probably would be happening anyway. And I think it's totally appropriate for that to be here. But as we look at things like focusing on relationships, connections and belonging and the student learning goals. That those are more specific, that they have. And, and maybe we'll find they're imperfect measures, but they're at least striving to be measurable, I think is really worthwhile. So I appreciate that a lot. Other thoughts from the committee?
I'm wondering in my head right now if we shouldn't have a benchmark on. Just on like retention of staff or staff turnover and goal three as well.
Retention.
Oh, of students and staff. Right. I can't read my own writing. Okay.
Yeah, I, I will, I, I thought I had done that in this. And that will be, that's an important benchmark, both students and staff.
So often we see the edits come back in before we vote. Given that we're going to be seeing this multiple times, I'm, I want to see how does this committee feel? My sense is to have the grace to vote through based on the conversation, knowing that five and, five is going to get. At like the benchmark will be labeled five and there's a six coming in that in goal four. That number three is going to be specific to meeting at least a hundred percent of the contract. If it goes over, great. But I'm like, my own interest is making sure we hit, hit the contract goals. And that we can specify how we're benchmarking, just for the sake of, we all know that like, yep, that's how we're going to look at that. I would be fine if we voted through, if there's comfort and let those amendments happen offline. Is that, how do you guys feel? Okay.
So I will make a motion to approve the superintendent, superintendent goals. For twenty-four, twenty-five school year in the amendments discussed.
Okay, we have a motion. A second by Becca, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Awesome. I thank you very much, Dr. Driscoll. And with that, we are going to move into executive committee. I would like to invite Dr. Driscoll to stay. This is pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter Thirty, Section A, Twenty-One A. To conduct strategy sessions and prep for negotiations with non-union or union personnel to conduct collective bargaining sessions. Or contract negotiations with non-union or union personnel. And to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if any open meeting may have a detrimental effect. And so I would entertain a roll call starting on this end. Actually, well, yes, that would be handy. I just want to get right on into it. So can I have a motion to move into executive session? Is there a second, second? I have seconds and a roll call.
Sullivan, aye?
And with that, we are moving into executive session without the intent to return. And so we're closing off this Zoom. Thank you for those to stayed with us.